It is nine o'clock. We will call to order the Blue Earth County Board Meeting and ask it all that can. Please rise for a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with an agenda review. Bob, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote to approve the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is passed. Now, the county board serves as drainage authority for the county drainage systems in Blue Earth County. I think we've got, what, 107 or 108 in that? And that's a very open process with a lot of landowner meetings as well as public hearings and other things. This morning, we've got five different ditches we're going to set public hearings for, so I'm going to ask our drainage staff to begin with the first one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ryan Henneker, Blue Earth County Drainage. I'll start with County Ditch 36. The County Ditch 36 watershed is more than 4,200 acres and is primarily in Butternut Valley Township. A petition to all additional lands into County Ditch 36 public drainage system was received by Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on March 30th of 2023. A public hearing for the proposed petition, including the review of the viewers and engineers' report, is required. This morning, we request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority for County Ditch 36, set a date of December 19th, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. for the hearing on this proposed petition.
Okay, you've heard the staff. We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. This will be a part of our normal board meeting that day because it's a county ditch. It's only commissioners from Blue Earth County, so we'll do that as part of that. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry. Next one, please.
All right. Next one is County Ditch 47. The County Ditch 47 watershed has approximately 2,100 proposed acres of benefit and is located in Butternut Valley, excuse me, Butternut Valley and Camber Township. On April 4th, 2023, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers and an engineer were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing in a viewers' report for County Ditch 47. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on October 17th, 2023. I'm here this morning to request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of December 12th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for the hearing on the proposed viewers' report for County Ditch 47, redetermination of benefits.
You've heard the action requested. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Any questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry. Thank you. Next one, please.
Next one is Craig Austin, San Olson, Blue Earth County Drainage. It's regarding County Ditch 56, Branch 22. Hearing on the final survey and viewers' report, the Blue Earth County Ditch 56 with 8,426 benefit of acres is located in Garden City in Lincoln Township. Petition for improvement was received on August 22, 2022. The hearing of the preliminary survey report was held on June 20th, 2023, where the Drainage Authority ordered Charles J. Brandl, engineer, to make a detailed survey report and ordered the viewers to prepare a report on the benefits and damages. Mr. Brandl submitted his detailed survey report to the Property and Environmental Resources Department on September 8th, 2023. The viewers submitted their report on September 28th, 2023. The DNR report was received on October 6th, 2023. Action requested, we request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date for the hearing on the detailed survey report and viewers' report for December 19th, 2023.
Thank you. You've heard the action. And ask, Chair, would request a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions? Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Next one here is actually for petition for improvement and redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 79. The Blue Earth County Ditch 79 watershed is approximately 480 acres in size and is located in Judson Township. On September 19th, 2022, Drainage Staff received a petition for improvements to County Ditch 79. On November 11th, 2022, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles Chuck J. Brandl of ISG to prepare a preliminary survey for the improvement. Mr. Brandl filed the preliminary survey report with the Property and Environmental Resources Department on February 6th, 2023. On April 4th, 2023, the engineers ordered to prepare a detailed survey report and viewers were appointed to complete a determination of benefits and a redetermination of benefits. The file engineer's report was received on August 2nd, 2023. The viewers' report was received on October 3rd, 2023. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we ask the Drainage Authority to set a date for the hearings on the redetermination of benefits and the detailed survey and viewers' report for December 12th, 2023.
Thank you. You've heard the request. Is there a motion to...
Just a point of clarification. There's no time on here. Is that a big issue or...?
No, it's nine o'clock. Yeah. It's a part of the findings and order.
Oh, okay. Up there. All right. All right. I'll move approval.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Discussion. Any questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
All right. I'll take up the last one here. Judicial Ditch 29 watershed has approximately 2,300 proposed acres of benefit located in Judson and Butternut Valley Townships. On March 30th, 2023, a petition for removal of benefits was received by Property and Environmental Resources Department staff. On May 23rd, 2023, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, by findings and order, appointed a viewer and an engineer to both aid in the proposed petition and give their respective updated reports for judicial ditch 29. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the proposed petition for removal, including updated drafted benefits and damages, was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on October 16th, 2023. Action item requested, we request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of December 12th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for the hearing on the proposed petition for removal of benefits, including the drafted viewers' report for judicial ditch 29.
Okay, you've heard the action. What is your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It moved in second. Any discussion? Any questions? Are we ready to vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. Anything else from Drainage Staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
So far.
Next on the agenda is information technology. Carrie, if you'd join us, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie.
Have a couple of items in front of us this morning, one of them being another broadband initiative. This one would be by Charter Communications. It is for the townships including Decoria and Lyria Townships and the cities of Good, Garden Center, Good Thunder, and Rapidan. The legislative session brought forward $50 million in general revenue funds to be allocated to border-to-border grant for fiscal year 2024, and this is grant round number nine, started on October 9th, 2023, and is due by December 7th, 2023. So what we're proposing is that we would do a Blue Earth County match of $100,000 towards their $8.89 million total project, which is a total passings of 1,020 passings, and this would be for south of Mankato. The action item, we're requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution allocating County ARPA funds pending the ISP's project being approved by Minnesota Deed for fiscal year 2024 Minnesota Border-to-Border Grant Round Number Nine funding.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions here.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second? A second. Any discussion?
Very exciting to see it out in that area.
Keep going south, too.
Too bad Kevin can't make the motion because he's the chair and Vance ain't here to push it through. No, great program. Yes, very important. Good job.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
All right, the second item that I have up for approval is the PH Docs system that we currently use in public health, and the changes are the terms starting 1/1/2024 to 12/31/2026. We have the option of a two-year renewal through 12/31/2028. The difference from the existing contract to the new contract are the pricing. The pricing is $1,017,236, and this is divided by 37 counties based on population size. Blue Earth County's portion of that is about $30,711.57 per year. That's a 6% increase over previous years. And they also have a change in their hourly rate for change requests for the year, which is $200.32. That's for if we need any additions made to the software or enhancements made to the software. And their travel time hourly rate for year one is $100. So those are the only changes over the existing management agreement that we have with them over for the next couple of years.
Any questions on this maintenance and support agreement?
This has been working out already?
Yes, it has. Yep, they do.
Good. I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Additional questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Item number five on our agenda is Public Works. Ryan, I ask you to join us, please.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan. Good morning, Ryan.
All right. The first action item for consideration today is consideration of MinDOT Contract Number 1055034. This is for a detour agreement between the Minnesota Department of Transportation and Blue Earth County for detour of Trunk Highway 22 traffic using county-stated highways 57, 26, and 12 for the construction of a roundabout at Highway 22 and Bassett Drive. The reimbursement under this, based on MinDOT's road life loss calculation, reimbursement to Blue Earth County, $14,230.87. I did not list it out separately, but there is a resolution attached to the back of the last page of the agreement that would also be approved as part of the agreement I would request. So I would request approval of said detour agreement and resolution included in the board packet.
And can we do the contract and the resolution as one motion?
I'd leave it totally up to you guys, however you'd prefer to do it. I just didn't list it as two separate items in my agenda unintentionally.
I'll move approval of both items.
Yeah. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Action item number two is consideration of final contract payment number 25 for state aid project 007601018 for Mathewitz Construction Company for the reconstruction of county-stated Highway 1, formerly Minnesota Highway 66, from county-stated Highway 90 to Cas- County Stated Highway 9. The revised final contract amount is $16,538,405.52, with the total final pay voucher being $148,214.20. I would recommend final approval, final payment, approval of final payment of this contract pay voucher number 25.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. What's your pleasure? Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Discussion? So we know what today is. Do we know what the first day we started thinking about this project?
Oh, boy.
And it was going to happen? Nothing happens fast in construction, but this has been a major...
I would surmise, we took the road back in 20... It was before I was county engineer. It was 2014 or 15. So I think those discussions probably started somewhere in about 13. You know, we started the first reconstruction segment in 2016. So I'm incredibly happy to have this entire turnback project behind me, 11 miles and over $30 million, and a lot of challenges and headaches and lost sleep, but it's a fantastic project now that's all said and done.
Beautiful road, yeah.
Good. Good. Thank you. Next item.
All right. Action item number three is consideration of a partnership agreement.
Can we vote?
I don't remember voting.
I guess I was under a question, so I'm sorry. We need to vote. We have a motion and a second. We do need to vote, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry. Sorry.
That's all right. All right. Action item number three, consider partnership agreement for carbon reduction program for a project to purchase seven EV pickup trucks. This is a cooperative agreement between Blue Earth County, Fairbald County, La Sure County, Nicolet County, Sibley County, Wasika County, and Watanwan County for pursuing a federal carbon reduction grant to purchase said electric vehicles. It's intended that this federal carbon reduction grant will pay for 80% of the purchase price of these seven EV pickups. Each county would get an EV pickup out of this, so we're still waiting on the actual agreement from MinDOT to be approved, but prior to that, we wanted to ensure that we had the agreement in place between the seven counties so that once we get that state federal grant agreement executed, we want to go out the bid immediately. So we've sent this and refined it, and just for the board's information, there is also mirrored version of this for the other six counties that's being led by Cottonwood County within District 7, for those kind of south and west counties. And the reason we're splitting those up is obviously it's advantageous for us. It allowed us to purchase the vehicles instead of going through a lease because of some of the Buy America clauses that are in there. We subdivided the federal grant, which is just better. It saves both agencies quite a bit of money as well, avoiding some of the lease finance fees and things of that nature. With that being said, it's anticipated that the total grant amount will receive, Blue Earth County will receive up to $452,940 in federal CRP funding, again, to pay for 80% of those vehicle purchases. Each of the said counties will pay for their remaining 20% of the price per their vehicle. We will administer it and bill them, and we will be the pass-through agency for the federal funds. So with that, I would recommend approval of this partnership agreement. I should... Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll just add that on the back, on Exhibit A, the last page of this agreement, there is a more of a detailed breakdown that shows the estimated vehicle purchase price, the federal share compared to the county shares. And again, that translates per individual county to about $61,000 of CRP federal dollars and about $15,000 of county dollars going into the purchase of each vehicle.
So they're roughly 70-some or...
Yeah, they're roughly... They're very expensive. $71,635 per the four build sites. So this is an opportunity for the counties to buy one of these at a very low out-of-pocket price and use it on a trial basis to determine how it fits their fleet needs before making that full investment. That's how we view this.
Mr. Chair, is it strictly then electric powered? Is there a hybrid?
Strictly an EV pickup, yep.
I'd be interested to see how that all works out.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation for a partnership agreement. What are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Additional questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. Next item, please, Rob.
Thank you. Action item number four is a resolution for the purchase of the EV pickup under the carbon reduction program federal agreement, again, reciting those federal grant amount dollars, the 80% purchase price of seven EV pickups for 2024. Whereas Blue Earth County is interested in exploring greenhouse gas reduction opportunities and has identified this grant as an opportunity to test the performance and function of an EV pickup in its Public Works Department fleet, and whereas we are partnering with those other counties, and each of the aforementioned counties will receive an EV pickup. I'm obviously summarizing, not wanting to read it word for word. But ultimately, now therefore, the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners approves the purchase of this unbudgeted EV pickup truck through the CRP federal grant, and that the Blue Earth County Board approves a one-time budget allocation for its respective 20% non-federal matching cost for the EV pickup truck purchase, estimated at $15,319.98, which would be based on actual price. Budgets would be adjusted accordingly. Bob and I did talk about this during our routine meetings. I thought this was the best way to pursue this, so that this vehicle can be kind of an additional fleet vehicle and be used in different facets of the work. If we assign it to just one employee or it became just my county engineer vehicle, we want to try it. We want to try it for signing operations. We want to try it for in the middle of a snowstorm. You know, I mean, we want to put it in different aspects of our fleet to see where we think these would function well and where they may have shortcomings.
Good idea.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, we've seen the resolution. What are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
No, second.
Got a motion and a second. Additional discussion? Questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you for that. Information item, project updates. County-stated Highway 26 from 57 to Minnesota Highway 22. Minnesota paving materials is obviously far behind schedule out there. They are planning on completing their roadway betuminous paving this week. The trail will not be completed in 2023. The entirety of the trail will be delayed until 2024, given the season that we're facing. The grading work behind the curbs, tile work in the grading areas, and lighting installation is also underway. We anticipate the striping turf establishment and signage will follow next week and to be able to open the road by the end of next week. We have, again, been assessing liquidated damages for their failure to complete it on time, and we'll continue to assess probably a partial liquidated damage in the spring for the project's lack of completion. County-stated Highway 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, the contractor is working on the one block of county-stated Highway 72 that's East Street in the city. That's a north-south stretch. If you know, CASA 72 makes kind of a horseshoe off of US Highway 169. That will remain gravel over the winter for the city's newsletter that was going out, and then they'll put the pavement on in the spring. No work on county-stated highways 10 is planned in 2023. CASA 13 from US 169 to CASA 1, County Ditch 78 realignment and the associated pipe crossings and drainage ditch system relocation has been completed. The back slope grading for the snow traps near County Ditch 78 and wetland fillers near the bridge are completed as well, so again, we're tackling those Army Corps of Engineers permitted items. Mathewitz is going to continue working on grading items and pipework outside of the established roadbed as long as the weather is suitable. They did have more grandiose plans to complete more of the road grading this fall. However, with the, you know, the rainfall that we received in October, that made them a little more skittish in the colder temperatures. They don't want to open up anything that they can't complete wisely. Wisely so. Bridge removal is scheduled for late November. That will still be on schedule to be completed over the winter or at least come close to completion so that their contractor is able to utilize that throughout the majority of the construction project next summer.
Will the bridge remain open for those on the road until removal?
Correct. Yep, that would be the intention. And then road closure signage will be adjusted when the bridge is removed and for winter shutdown. Just from the board's information, there are two little, very short segments of township road on the west side of the bridge. The county has agreed to plow partial segments of those roads for the township because they're kind of isolated, and it'd be a pretty grandiose detour for the township to have to make with their motor grader, just to pick up maybe a mile of gravel roads to plow. So they asked us if we would do it because we're the, obviously taking the bridge out, and we agreed to it because we really couldn't see a justification in making them make that detour, just plow less than a mile of road. County-stated Highway 11 from the west county line to 6. Plans are at 90% ready for submission to state aid. The right-of-way acquisition is close to completion. Victory Drive, county-stated Highway 82 from south of Hoffman to, well, all the way to Fair Street. As you know, we're going to be subdividing that into two separate segments, constructing the southern segment from south of Hoffman to south of Maine in 2024, per the city of Mankato's request in coordination with their reconstruction work happening on Riverfront Drive. And then we'll follow with that subsequent north segment up to Fair Street in 2025. We did have a public open house meeting on October 24th. We did receive good turnout, good public feedback. Stonerbrook expects to submit the 90% plans in about two weeks, so it's moving right along. Maintenance activities. Crews have been busy wrapping up betuminous patching, shouldering. They do plan on completing streambank stabilization project out at Wildwood Park. It'd be on the east side of the park along the river between the farm field and the river, now that that's been fully permitted. And then there's also Red Jacket Valley Park erosion repair project that they want to complete yet before winter truly sets in. They're also mowing shoulders, field driveways, and back cuts. They completed guardrail repair on CASA 5 and 57, and then hoping to get all of the County Road 172 guardrail replaced yet this year, installing a few driveways, and then starting to prepare snow equipment as well as some minor grading, ditch shaping, and things of that nature. Starting to get the roads ready for winter, getting them kind of that last blading that has moisture is available. And with that, they're starting to blade through some of those chloride areas so that we may, if you do get complaints about dust, it's because we're prepping those roads and shaving them for winter maintenance operations. We try to leave those alone as long as we can. Rapidan Dam update was provided in the board's packet. Relatively minimal update, just to let the board know that we did receive acknowledgement of our downstream apron topographical survey results. The FERC concur that there appears to be little scour, erosion, or degradation since the last survey. So while we have a large scour hole there, it seems like the one, that original apron that was poured in the early 2000s is, that's below the second apron on top, is holding up okay for the time being, so that's good. And then on November 2nd, Homeland Security Emergency Management, HSEM, provided email confirmation that our request to extend our deadline for the FEMA grant that was received was received by FEMA. FEMA had some questions, which we responded to. They've shared those responses with FEMA, so now we're just waiting. It took quite a long time to get those responses back from FEMA with two simple questions. One of the questions was really just looking for updates on the status, but secondly, wanting to know about the timeline for the county board making a decision on the fate of the dam. So I did fill them in on where we're at with the FERC, and really, our decision and timeline is likely going to be hinged on conversations and conditions that the FERC and the DNR may place upon the county situationally, so we'll see what response we receive from that. The county long-range transportation plan is nearing completion. We will be presenting some information on that as well as kind of talking about project selection criteria at the upcoming November 14th board work session, so I'm happy with the results of that. I think it's been a lot of time invested and capital invested, but I think it's going to yield good results. We've already started using the projects list as we've started laying out the projects for the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan, and so I think it's going to be a tremendous tool for us in several different aspects, looking at our system as a whole and summarizing policy amongst many other issues that we face. And last but not least, just wanted to let the board know that I will be one of the presenters at the AMC Annual Meeting from the Minnesota County Engineers Association. We'll be providing a legislative session impacts to county-stated highway and county road funding update in addition. So myself and Lyndon Rogent, who's another one of my legislative committee colleagues, will be making that presentation for about a half hour on Monday of the conference. I think it starts at 1:15. I think it starts at one fifteen, and then two, two other colleagues will be making an additional presentation, so.
Guess we better be there.
You've been put on notice, right? No, I just wanted to make the board aware of it, and we're looking forward, we appreciate the opportunity to present to Commissioners and kind of share some of that information with you, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for doing it.
concludes my report.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, good day.
Next item on our agenda is county attorney report. Mr. McDermott, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The report, as always, speaks for itself. If you have any questions related to anything in the report, I'm more than happy to answer that for you. Just one matter I wanted to follow up on. I know I had provided some information a while ago regarding the public defenders receiving in, in around a thirty percent increase in salary. This has been a challenge for county attorneys' offices across the state. I looked late yesterday on the County Attorneys Association website. There's recruitment for twenty-four positions for county attorneys' offices across the state. I'm following up on some information. Last week, I was told and verified some of the information that a neighboring county attorney actually resigned to become a line public defender and will create, receive a substantial increase in pay. I was informed over the weekend that an assistant in a neighboring county has also resigned and will going, is going to work for the county, for the public defender's office. And again, so it, it, this is a challenge for us. Since the beginning of August, we've been at least one, and for a period of time, two attorneys short, and we continue to try to recruit, but we're just not getting the candidates that we feel are sufficient to do the job. And it's, it's very sporadic on some of the, if we do even get anybody to apply. So I just wanted to make you aware of that information, and we'll continue to move forward the best that we can. Any questions, please let me know.
Yes, I just, one question, you know, we're kind of two months into the school calendar now. I know we talked a little bit about truancy and stuff. Is there any changes or any update on that?
It's been a drastic increase, and, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chair, because that is a, you know, Michelle Zander Fisher and I will be meeting again next week with, with some of the members from District Seventy-seven. And this isn't anything unique to just District Seventy-seven, it's across the state. Pre-COVID, the, the state would allow students, they weren't concerned if students missed up to ten percent of the school days, which basically equates to about seventeen days, whether they're excused or unexcused. That number was above ninety percent that nobody, the students weren't missing that time. During COVID, when it wasn't really, you know, they were kind of loose with, loose and fast with the rules, and everything was virtual, it was around eighty percent. Well, coming out of COVID, it dropped into the sixty percent, so it's back up into the seventies now. So there's a real push on that, and I believe it was last weekend that we received over fifty referrals on a Saturday and Sunday. So that's how much they are putting time and effort into this to make sure that the, the kids are in the seats and learning. So we've been expending quite a bit of resources there with the truancy meetings, the tip presentations, and the truancy and the SART meetings and whatnot, so, and hopefully it's working, it's proved to work in the past, and we'll continue to provide what assistance we can to all the school districts when they need it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Excuse me. Next item is administration report. Bob, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for October twenty-fourth.
So move. Move the county board minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and a minute, any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Those moved and seconded, discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number twelve in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration this morning, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a probation officer two. This is a byproduct of our union contract, where we have language in there that indicates that at least fifty percent of our probation officers will be a probation officer two. With the recent addition of a probation officer one, we've now hit that threshold where we need to fill a probation officer two position. So requesting approval, we're here to initiate that recruitment.
So move.
Got a motion and a second, discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Under informational items, then, we have a resignation of a human service supervisor in our child and family services area, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a supervisor in our financial assistance area in human services and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. Item E is a change in the start date of an eligibility specialist from October twenty-fifth to November eighth. Then we did receive a resignation of a correctional officer in our jail, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We had an increase in hours for a part-time correctional officer to full-time and have subsequently initiated recruitment for that part-time correctional officer position. Then we had a promotion of a correctional officer to a sergeant in the jail, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that correctional officer position. I actually had two of those, so items L and M on the agenda indicate that we had another one. Item N is an employment of a probation officer. Then we had a promotion of an office coordinator to a temporary probation officer one with adjustment in that individual's wage. And then lastly, we filled a maintenance technician one position in our county highway departments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those HR-related items.
Questions or comments?
I don't have any questions.
All right, no.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioners Reports on Committees. Mark, would you like to go first?
Okay. On the twenty-fourth October, I did go to the open house on Casaw eighty-two at Public Works. On October twenty-fifth, and we had AMC in Nicolat County, District Seven AMC, and that was worthwhile, I think, for all. October twenty-sixth, we had a partners for housing meeting, and they're dealing with a little bit more money because of the legislature and the governor had put more money into the, in public, in public housing and so forth with groups like Partners. Mayors and Clerks, then, was in Eagle Lake, that same, that night. And then November first, did have a department heads meeting, and November second, had a Maple Policy Board, where we're looking at various things, and even talking, kind of getting into the, with buses and stuff again with the battery, battery power. Then we have, on November seventh, I did have the JD forty-eight, and that was a storm, stormy. That concludes, that concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Brunder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, we met as the, Kevin and I met with the staff and talked about the ditch levies. Got through it relatively quickly. Making good progress on that, trying not to have any of our ditches in a negative. We get a couple out and we get a couple back in, but we worked very hard trying to keep them all level and zeroed out. Mayors and Clerks, Mark mentioned already, that was a good program. Josh did a nice job presenting on the funding mechanisms we have going on in Blue Earth County and how they help, it can help with the small cities, and I thought it was a relatively good turnout for a Mayors and Clerks meeting in Eagle Lake. Then we had planning and zoning, that, we just had two items on the agenda, both non-eventful, and they'll be coming forward here in the next, at the next meeting. And then yesterday morning, I had JD fifty-one with Wasika County, and Commissioner Pat met us over there, and we just about got through that one, but there was some discrepancies on the lines, so they extended the hearing to another meeting date so they can just kind of finalize those and get them done right. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My report is, is very similar. Since the last board meeting, the drainage levy meeting on the twenty-fourth, I had also attended AMC District Seven meeting on the twenty-fifth, as well as Mayors and Clerks on the twenty-sixth. The drainage meeting yesterday, as Mr. Brunder had talked about, and then this morning, we had drainage meetings on JD nine and ten, as well as JD forty-eight. That concludes my report. That's everything on our agenda. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Chair.